States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Call the roll.
Trustee Spurling, trustee Lee.
Yes.
Trustee Heights, trustee Youngerman.
Here.
Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And trustee Bond.
All right, we do have a quorum this evening. Move on to public participation. The first item is public comment period. Any member of the public wishing to address the board? Oh, we do have one. Curveball.
Sorry. This is just a quick reminder. I just wanted to remind everyone that you're invited to the annual holiday ME DC party on Thursday, next Thursday, at Poor Boys from four to seven. It's an open house. So just wanted to let everybody know so they don't forget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other members of the public? Hearing none. I'll move on to item B, which is the public hearing for the 2018 tax levy. With that, I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to staff if you have any other questions.
We don't have any comments. We'll cover this under the items for separate action.
Okay. All right. Any member of the public wishing to address the board on that? Property tax levy for 2018. All right, hearing none. We'll close the public hearing and move on to item C, which is a public hearing on a low-interest loan from the Illinois EPA. With that, I'll turn it over to our village engineer, Julie Morrison, to update us on this.
Good evening. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to allow the public to comment on the village's plan to remove the lead services located within the Marbury Manor subdivision in the downtown area. The public hearing is a requirement of the EPA's low-interest loan program through which the village is seeking funding assistance for this project. Following the public hearing, there is an additional 10-day comment period where the public can submit written comments to the village clerk or directly to the I E P A. A copy of the project plan is available here at the front desk at Village Hall for review by the public and will remain there until December 7th.
Awesome. Thank you. And since we're not talking about this loan elsewhere, this is the, with this project, the village will be removing all known lead service lines that we have, correct?
That is correct.
And it's, part of it's forgivable?
It's correct. It is 50% forgivable up to $1 million. So if your project costs, let's say, $1 million, you'd get $500,000 back. If it costs $2 million, you'd get $1 million back. If it costs $3 million, you'd get $1 million back.
Awesome. Okay. I like it. Any comments from the board or comments from the public? Oh, I thought we had to shower for another comment.
I just appreciate the fact that, you know, the board and the staff are working to resolve this problem and not, like is required by the state statute, to remove a certain percentage each year. That we're actually looking at it because of the amount that we have to just do it and be done with it and bite the bullet and get it back and fixed for our residents.
Well, we're pretty fortunate in that we don't have, you know, several thousand of those. I know the city of Chicago, I think, I don't know how many thousands they have, but that would be an unmanageable amount of money to fund into this. So I think we're pretty lucky in that regard. All right. Any comments from the public on the public hearing? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Thank you. And move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items and entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the village board meeting of November 13th, executive session minutes for November 13th, accounts payable through November 20th, and the schedule of meetings for 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yay.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
That carries three zero. Thank you. Under items for separate action, the first item is ordinance 1823, establishing an SSA number 41 for the Aurora University Spartan Athletic Field, Athletic Complex, sorry. And this is a waiver of first and passage on the second reading. And who wants to handle this?
Thank you. This is, as you are familiar with, the routine special service areas that we have to pass on all properties that require industrial or residential subdivision detention, or detention, excuse me. It's backup. There's nothing terribly exciting about it. We're just complying with the usual statutory requirements. This is, as we said, waiver of first, passage on second, and we'll take it from there.
Any questions?
Is this related to the area where we had some issues of some work that hadn't been completed? And has all that, I think we may have circled around and that's all been squared away and taken care of?
Pete can verify, but I believe that all of the work that was required by the punch list review of the detention facilities for their first phase has now been completed. And so, yes, it does relate to that overall drainage complex. There are other bits and pieces to close out that first phase that are still in process, which is part of the field tile system. But to answer your question, yes, the detention facility is part of that area.
But remember, this is not related to the initial installation. This is the ongoing maintenance once they get it correctly put into place.
Thank you.
And again, if they maintain it, then we never have to.
Yeah, this is your typical backup situation.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 1823.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
All right. That carries three zero. Thank you. Moving on, item B, we have 1829, adopting the tax levy for 2018. This is first reading. Justin, do you have an update?
Thank you, President Brawley. The attached levy removes the PTAL on existing property as requested by the board at the November 13th board meeting. Other than that, everything else is as it was at that meeting. If you have any questions, I can answer those at this time.
Any other questions? If you have any between now and, when are we approving this? Our meeting in?
December 10th.
December 10th?
In, because trustee Spurling and trustee Bond are not here, is this something that at that meeting we can put items for separate action just to take a vote on it and not consent? Okay. In case of that question.
That makes sense. And if you have any questions or potential changes to that, if you can get that to staff in advance of that meeting, so we're not trying to calculate things on the fly at the meeting, that would be, that would be helpful.
But this is the tax levy that we've held with no increase for the last six years. And we're just doing the same thing again. We're not, our increases only on new properties.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and move on to item C, which is the award of a contract for leak detection survey to M.E. Simpson Company, Inc., in the amount of $21,645. This is a waiver of bid.
Yes, so because of that, we need four votes. The mayor is entitled to vote on matters where exactly half the trustees vote in favor of it. So assuming you have three votes aye from the trustees, then the mayor could vote, not obligated to, but could vote and then be the fourth.
All right. Go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this year, we talked about, you know, doing our annual leak detection survey, and we weren't really happy with our last vendor that we had. And we decided to go out and get some RFPs for this type of service. So in September, we had gone out for the RFPs and we received two proposals back, one from M.E. Simpson Company and one from Ace Pipe Cleaning. After investigating and thoroughly going through the documents that both parties submitted, we had come to a conclusion that Ace Pipe Cleaning did not meet our recommendations, our specifications, I should say. We had asked for three different local leak detection surveys that they've done, and they've only provided one. And it wasn't even local. It was up in Michigan. So M.E. Simpson's been a big player in the water industry for many, many years. They actually do our emergency leak detection. So at this time, I would like to seek approval from the board to move ahead with signing a contract with M.E. Simpson for our annual leak detection for $21,645.
When, when's this going to be done? And who is the last guy that we had to do it?
The last, oh, we were hoping to get this done a little bit earlier, and then now with the winter turning, it's really not a bad time to wait right now because, again, we're going to get a lot of ground movement, and we may even find some leaks that may happen after the winter season. So we're definitely going to get it done before the fiscal year end. Utility, what are the products? Water services. We're the last vendors that did it. And we had them come in and do a couple emergencies, pinpoints for us, and they were actually pretty far off on, one of them would have been on Montgomery Road, and it would have probably been a $15,000 dig to dig a dry hole. So we feel like changing up and going with somebody a little bit more reputable.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this village-wide, is this a scan of our entire system, or is this as needed not to exceed? How does that work?
No, this would be our entire system. They would listen to every fire hydrant, every valve in town. They would correlate. They would try to pinpoint leaks. Then they start narrowing them down to actually get an exact pinpoint on them and give us reports. And then we would go and dig them up and fix them.
Now, the last time we did this, how many did we find?
It was before me, but I think it was, what about, there were, what, 10, 12, they said? So I'm expecting that we're going to find a little bit more, especially with the unidirectional flushing that we did this year. You know, that's put a little bit of a strain on the system, but it was good. It needed to be done. So I'm hoping that, you know, hopefully we don't have a lot, but we're, hopefully we find a lot of those small ones that will leak, 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 and then they just start eroding that soil around the pipe, and that's when they actually become a big water main break. So hopefully we'll catch those sooner, get those leaks stopped.
For all the hydrants we got, I think this is a pretty reasonable price, especially coming out of Indiana. It's a...
Reality is, how much does it cost if you have one of those major bursts, you know, on Montgomery Road, let's say in the middle of winter or whatnot? Or we had one and...
We had one last year.
We had one on Douglas and 30, not Douglas, Briar Cliff and 30 several years ago that we just had to let run for a while until we could get, either a permit from I D O T or whatever it was. But we just, were just spewing water at that point for, for a while. So, okay. Any other comments for Rick on that?
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And trust, and President Brawley.
Yes. Thank you.
Matt, this next item, if we could, I'd like to table. If it's okay with you, Rick, I'd like to table this item. I haven't had a chance to really get into the meat of it. I want to just kind of review it and understand it.
It's just a first reading.
So we're not passing it tonight?
Okay. That way you can get some explanation from, from which might help you then in your review.
All right. So item D is ordinance 1835. It's first reading. This is amending the village code regarding our tree ordinance. Go ahead, Rick. You want to give us the summary?
Thank you again, Mr. President. Earlier this year, we had an Arbor Day celebration, and part of that Arbor Day celebration was the prelude to getting the Tree City USA nomination. Part of that is the documentation that needs to be provided to the Arbor Day Foundation. We had proposed, put all that through to the Arbor Day Foundation with our ordinance, and unfortunately, our ordinance didn't meet their regulations. A lot of it had to do just because of the ordinance is a little bit outdated. So what we had also did, we applied for a tree grant earlier this year, and we received a $15,000 grant for doing a survey throughout the whole entire community. Part of that was as well, the ordinance needed to be submitted to the Morton Arbor Edom, who was administering this grant fund. And they said the exact same thing, that our ordinance needed to be changed a little bit to get it up to current standards and some language in there. So I had our attorneys go through and give us some red line corrections on the actual ordinance itself to reflect some of these changes. Just in a couple, the biggest thing is, is that in the ordinance, it says that we have a village tree board, which I've done some research, and I haven't heard of a tree board, you know, officially at the board level in a long time. So this would remove that from the ordinance. It would put it as a tree manager, which would be our village arborist slash public works director. Again, this would also help us with receiving this $15,000 grant fund. It'll clearly state who's responsible for the enforcement of this ordinance as well. We are going to have to provide some documentation with official tree plans in the future. Those will be coming into play, how they'll be incorporated as well. One of the big things that they were looking for is tree preservation. So if you had a builder come in and you had a tree in a right-of-way, and they wanted to take it down, you had to, they either had to preserve it, barricade it off, or there's going to be some monumental value that they're going to have to give back to us. I think in the old ordinance, I think it was like $100. Well, you can't even buy a two-inch caliber tree nowadays for $100. So again, some of those little nuances that we've changed, it's just going to be for the better of the, you know, for moving forward with this, with this new ordinance.
And in 16 years, I don't ever remember 18 years. I don't remember anybody wanting to climb a tree to get on the tree board. I never heard of the tree board. So it's way before me, too.
The one question I had is, our zoning ordinance talks about, it quantifies tree replacement also, right? So if you move into a site and you tear down all the trees, you're required to plant a certain number of new trees. So that'd be different from this.
They'll be a little bit coincided with each other.
Yeah.
And again, with the zoning as well, we, I think it was included in your packet, was an actual list, an inventory of trees that we can, that would be suitable for planting in our village right-of-way limits. So that would be working together a little bit.
Awesome. All right. Any other questions or comments from staff? We're not voting on this today. Any questions of staff?
I'm sure I'm going to have questions. I just, I haven't had a chance to read through this and digest it a whole lot yet. So I'm, I want to compare because we, we deal with situations in the city of Chicago where I work all the time where, you know, it is, if you are removing trees, it's X number of new trees per caliper inch of tree and all sorts of things.
And that's what we have in the zoning ordinance for development.
In the zoning ordinance, we have something similar to that where you're replacing at a very miniscule rate, but you are replacing. It was modified 10 or 15 years ago. I don't know exactly when, because it was more restrictive in terms of what it required as replacement trees. There's also the option to, there's also the option to pay into a fund or a tree fund where the village could use those funds to plant trees in other locations.
I know when, I think it was my first plan commission meeting, and I was new, and I was going to sit here and be quiet and all of these things. And then all of a sudden, the tree ordinance came up, and everyone was looking at me because of my background. And I, we did make it much less restrictive. And I think that there were, there are maybe one or two sites in Montgomery that really are affected by that ordinance.
The one that comes to mind all the time is the, what we call the Montgomery Business Center, where we have the Sugar Dome, and that was pretty much on high and dry property. But the balance of the potential development for that industrial park is in the heavily wooded area to the east. And so that's, I think, what you're referencing at the time several years ago when there was development proposals on that property. It was, it was counterproductive from a development standpoint to replace all of those trees or pay into the fund. It was a substantial dollar amount, which some staff members remember.
Yep. Okay. I remember. All right. This is first reading, so we'll put this on items for separate action at a future meeting.
Is it possible for me to get this ordinance in like the Microsoft Word document, please?
I thought you were going to say microfilm.
Could you burn that on some microfiche for me?
All right. I'll move on to items, items for discussion. We have, the first one, which is review of the village website redesign.
Yes, I will handle that. Yes, we're working with Civic Plus on updating our, our website. We haven't done it in a while and thought it could use it. And to start with here, I'll show you our current website, just so you can see. It's as if you don't go to it. And one thing you'll see as we go through, here right now, when you come down here, you do this whole, where you go through all the different, so that's one thing you'll see different. But we met with them, you know, over the phone a few times, had conference calls, and we provided them with pictures. They gave us a number of websites they've done recently that we looked through, told them things we liked, didn't like, and they provided us with then some samples of a proposed website that we want to go over with you and get comments before we move forward. So I'm actually going to show you options two and three that they gave us. And I can tell you about the first one when we get it. So, all right, and I had it bigger just a second ago. Let's get it. So you can see it a little better. So you can see at the top, you've still got the main headings, the search bar, and the social media links. You've got our logo at the top. Here, it's in white, and they've shaded the top of the picture a little in blue there to make the white stand out. And then you've got our graphic buttons down here. They looked at the things that people were going to most, and that helped decide what our, what the graphic button should be here. And then down below, you see we have sort of three columns with links, news, and calendar. So we feel it's a much cleaner look than what we had before. So some of the things we questioned with them was, one, we liked having the full color logo instead of the white. We wanted to see that. Talked about having something behind the, the buttons here, like a color block to make it stand out a little more. So, and then one of the other things we didn't really care for is they used the logo as a watermark here on the bottom. And with these columns, it doesn't really show up. So we talked about either having a pattern back there or a color, something like, like that. I did say this...
Contrast.
Yeah. I did say this is the second one that shows. The first one was just the same, except the blue shading here covered the whole picture, which really took the color away. It was all just sort of a, a blue. So we asked them to remove that. So then, the second one they sent back to us, hey, come back. And you're going to shrink down on me again. So here you can see, they used the color logo, made the shading more white up here to make it stand out, and then put the color block behind this, which just makes those stand out a little more, we felt. Again, you have the three columns down below. I'm not going to, never mind. There we go. So you got, again, the three columns down there, and they got rid of the, the watermark there. So then they also did what they call an interior page. So when you go down, you know, inside one of the departments, so again, the, first one of those looks like, like that there. Again, it was the white with the blue shading. You know, we had the same comments here. And then also here, with having the borders be white here, it just kind of all blends in. So we asked them to provide some difference in color there, again, to try and make it stand out.
They would have the blue down here as well, along the...
Yeah. Yeah. So, so there's the second version they came back with.
Is our address 00 or isn't it 200?
Yeah, they haven't put, put that all in yet. This is just...
It still looks like there's a storm coming above the barn.
Yeah.
That's all right.
So total. Then the other thing I was just going to show you, because that, none of that's, those are all just pictures they sent of it, so I couldn't show you anything in there. One of the sites we looked at that's somewhat similar here is Annapolis, Maryland. You can see they've got down below the, you know, the columns like we were looking at, graphic buttons. But I can show you more there. When you get in here, it's more like, instead of having all those cascading where you go on one, and then it's a little bigger menu right there that you can just see everything.
Now, if you go down to board and, under that one, do you go down to board and commissions? Does it, you have to actually click through?
Yeah, then you have to click on one of those. But instead of doing the, where you go like seven levels, it just kind of shows you. And so that's what it would do in ours also then. And then there, if you go in, there's like one of the next pages, like one of their follow-up pages. So with that, as I said, we were seeking, you know, any feedback you have, things you liked, didn't like.
I like the fact that on their, these three menu bars that are pulled down, you know, that are there, that the colors were different on that Annapolis one. Then they weren't all blue. They, they were slightly, you know, they were varying.
Right, the, the tops there.
Do you like the white there?
The white within the menu?
Yeah.
Yeah, for the headings.
So you liked down below here where these were, these were a different color?
Yeah.
The headers.
Help distinguish.
You don't want that, those colors to go all the way through?
No.
Okay.
I like it. I like it. Cool. Is that the picture we would be, is that a picture that we use on our regulars?
No, we gave them like 10 or 11 new pictures that we had. And what would happen is, every time you go on, it would be a different picture.
Oh, okay.
So when you come on, it might be the, come on again, it'll be a different picture. It'll, like, it's not, as I understand, it's not a slideshow, right? But each time you come on, it'd be a different picture? Okay. There you go. It's a slideshow. So the pictures would switch while you're, so we gave them multiple pictures.
I like the slideshow idea because if, if you go there, and this is what you're used to seeing.
Right. And then you go, it's a different picture?
You start to think you're in the wrong place.
Other items I missed, Debbie?
One of the pictures is President Brawley's face, and so it comes up there.
It's a refreshing look.
Yes, it is.
This redesign includes an upgrade to a platform that is more user-friendly for people using mobile devices. They said that we have surpassed the 50% mark, that most people are accessing our website through a mobile device. So it'll be better for, for them with the platform.
Cool.
All right. The chief was here that day.
We will, then we will move forward with the...
Below license and permits, we could put fence.
Just a suggestion.
Too soon, Danny.
Too soon.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, move on to the last item for discussion. We have the snow and ice control presentation, which is really just a video of last night's activities, I'm sure.
Just a little bit more color. Again, thank you all. I wanted to get this out beforehand before an actual event occurred, but we're doing it the day after. So very basic, the snow and ice plan for this year has really not seen any major overhauls or anything even remote close to that. In the actual plan itself, there's minor changes that were made, were basically title changes, since we've had some title changes of some of our, from supervisors to superintendents. And just giving a little bit more clarification on a few more minor things in the plan, and then some vehicle update numbers. The actual plan itself really didn't change. The strategies moving forward are going to be the same as they always have been the last few years. And an example of that was last night. Minus employee and staffing issues, it worked out, I think, pretty, pretty flawlessly. Yes, it was a burden on our staff, on the amount of hours that they were in, some of them. But I think overall, what we saw in the street conditions, especially later on this afternoon, proved that it was a worthy cause to go and do that type of operation. And what I'm saying by that is, you know, we've had in the past where we can go and do a split type of a rotation, where if we know we're going to get a, a bigger type of event, which I think we all realize that we, the, what they were anticipating was going to be a lot more than what we actually did receive. But when it did come down, it was a perfect timing that Mark Wolf, the street superintendent's right behind me, he's the one that came up with the game plan. So again, with those shifts, how we can change those as we need to on the fly, I think are important. Whether we need to, again, split the shifts so we can have less people in and then have more people later on if we're going to be able to have a long drawn-out event, or we can bring everybody in and knock it all out if we can get something really quick and just hit it hard. So that's not going to change. Really, Jeff, if you can go to the second slide, slide, please.
Does it have on slide two, but nah.
I'm on slide two, but nah.
Not wanting to work?
Really?
This is basically the exact same presentation. There's a few more little things that I added for this level, but this is the same that we presented to our own staff. We went over the, the actual plan itself. The biggest change was going to, was our route assignments, and we came up with some new vehicle checks and some reports. We made some real minor changes to the route maps, and then we talked about de-icing, anti-icing, and also pre-wetting. If you go to the next slide. One of the biggest keys of us out in what we're doing out in the street is safety. As you, we all know, like, last night was very treacherous. There were a point in time that, you know, you couldn't even see 10 feet in front of that truck. It was coming down pretty hard. And here, our guys are out trying to clear the roads when, you know, a lot of other people wouldn't even come out. IDOT wouldn't even come out on Route 30 at all. So, safety is, again, number one priority that we have out there. We want all of our guys to be well-rested and hydrated, eat healthy, make sure that they get a good, a good amount of sleep beforehand. We try to get them notified way in advance. I think Mark put out a email probably for 24 hours, if not more in advance, to let the, let them know what the anticipated event was going to be. Of course, it wasn't exactly that way when the event got closer, it'll change a little bit more, but we're trying to give them as much advanced notice as possible. Want our guys to really keep an eye on their trucks, make sure that all their trucks are in, in high working order. We also have our, a couple of years ago, I know Todd put out, put some new radios in some trucks, some with repeaters, so we can have some really good coverage with ours. And the guys do a very good job of keeping each other communicating if they get out of the truck or what their status is. You go to the next one, Jeff. So again, with the actual plan itself, like I said, there really wasn't much change. One thing I just did, we made some new updated maps. We had them laminated, we had them hole punched, so each one of the trucks or even our new guys can have them all in their vehicles, so that, that way they have, with them on 11 by 17s, they're very easy to read. Salt controllers, we've had, over the last few years, there's been some advancements in, in the type of controllers that they use, whether they're a manual type of a mode or automatic. Automatic is just like using a computer, you could set your, basically what kind of a rate you want, and it'll automatically adjust with your speed, whether it'll speed up or slow down based upon your, how fast you're going. So we've got a, a little bit of a mixture of both. With those controllers, those calibrations are key. Calibrating these vehicles is really what is going to define on how we're doing with chloride reduction. You know, that's our number one goal right now, is, it's in the industry standard. We want to preserve our waterways, and to have chloride reduction, you need to know exactly what you're putting down. So there's a specific method on making sure that these trucks are calibrated. Because we're still in the middle of leaf season a little bit, we haven't gotten to every single one of them, but we will by the time we get done with all that. But that is very key. Again, communication, you know, we're trying to let these guys know way in advance before a storm, what they're, what they can anticipate, you know, so we can, they can get ample rest beforehand. Before they go out, they're meeting with all of us to make sure that we're all on the same page in what everybody's doing, and actually what kind of rates we're going to be putting down when, when it comes to salting. During your shift, again, communicate, just to keep progress, you know, what do you see out there that we're not? So, you go to the next slide, Jeff. This is our current route assignments for this year. As you can see, there's a couple question marks and a couple categories. You know, we're in the process of looking at bringing a couple more bodies on board from some departures, so hopefully in the next few weeks, we can get some of those filled. Last night, we had the six routes in. We didn't have anybody doing the mains, so the guys in each of those sections did the mains, but hopefully if we get more staffing, we could actually have that seventh person in concentrating strictly on those mains. You can go to the next one. This is just a sample of our report that we're going to be using, and again, this is going to be a lot of, for the chloride reduction aspect of what we're trying to achieve. You know, we'll be able to do an ending, you know, how much salt we use for the, the season. We can get an average of how many lane miles we drove, and, and what that actually equates to with how many pounds of salt per lane mile, and that's what we're going to be using to gauge where our, you know, our successes are. You go to the next one, Jeff. So this is just the, our overview of our routes. Again, blue is zone area one, more east, and the green is our area two, purple, you can barely see the orange, which is like Lakewood Creek area, and then red and yellow. Again, those routes really haven't changed. The primary routes are highlighted in red, so those are going to be our first streets that we hit. So again, everybody is probably aware of these terminologies, but I just want to go over them. I'm very passionate about these, these next few slides, because I think it is an industry standard, and this is where we are going to be leading to, and it's only going, I think, ramp up over the next few years even more so than it is today. De-icing, you know, de-icing is something that, like, you know, even like later, earlier this morning, when we did have a little bit more of a snowpack and more of an icy scenario, you know, you could use more of a liquid system. Unfortunately, we don't have that right now, but I know in the budget for next year, we have some, we could probably be doing some of this stuff, but this is going to be the wave of future for pack snow. You know, that's how you're going to be able to break that bond. Anti-icing, this is what we do before a storm, if we can. It would not have worked for our storm of yesterday, since it was a rain-driven event first. It would have washed all the chemicals off the ground. But again, this is something that we're going to use heavily in the, in the next few months here, that if we can use it, the next slide is going to be a chart. It's a long, drawn-out chart, it's on there, you don't need to go and look at it, how it all works, but basically it's just telling you, you need to follow this chart. If you can make it all the way to the bottom, that means anti-ice. Anti-icing is going to help prevent that snow from sticking on the initial onset of a storm. That's just our chart there. Pre-wetting, on the next slide, Jeff, this is, this is where I've seen just a small, where we need to make a couple minor changes on how our spinners are, because again, we want to be able to keep that salt concentrated behind our trucks. If you start getting outside of that width of our trucks, you know, one, you're going to replow it back off, and it's just going to end up in the parkway or in the curb. So again, trying to keep that, that salt centered behind the truck, one of the things that really helps that out is being able to pre-wet that salt as it's being dropped out on the spinner, and make it, we call it super juicing it, where it helps that scatter from, from bouncing, and it keeps it concentrated right behind the vehicle. So that's something we're going to be doing in the next few weeks, too. Just a couple things that I want to look at this year, just personally, I mean, again, these are just going to be some trials that we're going to, you know, do every once in a while, nothing, no major changes, but snow plow blades, you know, the industry has gone from steel to more of a carbide blade. Steel blades over, you know, you get multiple events, you may have to change your blades out maybe once or twice throughout a season. Carbides are a little bit more expensive, but they got a carbide bead that's inside of them, and you can pretty much get five to six years out of them, depending on your roadways. And we have some pretty good roadways here, so I think that you can get some longevity out of them, and that way you're not having to do this during the middle of an event or halfway through the middle of the season. Some of our, most of our plow trucks have shoes, and I've always been a guy that likes to have his snow plow blade directly on the ground, because I think that's the most, you know, pressure that you're putting down and you're being able to scrape real well, and the whole goal is to remove as much snow as you can. So I'm going to look at that and see if we can try some demos and see if we can, how that works with either just raising them up or, you know, keeping them as they are and see what kind of, you know, what kind of results we get on that. One thing that I've talked about with our mechanic and Mark as well, is on how our spray systems for our trucks work. They're actually being sprayed on as salt's coming down onto a chute, and you only have that split second that that salt crystals coming down and you're spraying it with liquid, doesn't really blend and mix real well. So there's different techniques on changing where the sprayers go, and most of our trucks all have to be a little retrofitted or retuned to do this, but I think as the season goes on, we're going to try to do and get some of those taken care of, because I think the results will be pretty good. And again, ultimately, we're trying to do chloride reduction. You know, we're trying to keep our roadway safe, try to get them plowed off as quick as possible, but also uses a little salt. As we all know, what the salt prices jump from last year to this year are, there is still talk of that there's a salt stor, a shortage, because there's two mines that aren't being mined at this present time, so who knows what they may be next year. So, and again, keeping an eye on how things are, I'm keeping data on all those reports that we get and what the different snowstorms are, so we can actually have some data moving forward and, and see where our effectiveness really comes into play. Again, I put this in here just for some challenges, because we, we do have some challenges. We are short staff, we have some new staff. We have some, some guys that were out this morning that are still trying to learn where streets are, and they were out trying to plow. So I think it was a good throw them in there to, you know, get them, to get their feet wet, so hopefully they'll be progressing, you know, more and more we get some of these events. And again, training the newer employees with the equipments and the route. You know, equipment usage is, you know, if you don't know how to use the trucks and, and all of your parts and pieces, you know, you're not going to be as effective as somebody that can. So that's, that's all I had. If anybody's got any questions or concerns, I'd be more than happy to address them at this point.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions for Rick? All right, appreciate it. You got something?
No.
All right. All right, so we'll move on. Thank you again, appreciate it. To newer unfinished business, anything to come for the board?
I have an item, please. Because of the snow, I know that we were supposed to do a leaf pickup next week, or this, I guess this week, and with the snow, a couple residents have expressed concern to me, they, they've asked what's going on with the leaf pickup. Are we just going to postpone that?
We really haven't come up with any final determinations yet with the snow, you know, storm ending today. You know, I really want to see what we got out there and make a determination. Mark and I are going to sit down and talk about it and see what we can do. I mean, the hard part is, is that, you know, starting tonight, tomorrow night and Wednesday night, I mean, you're talking zero-degree temperatures, you know, or in the single, single digits. Those leaves are so wet right now, and then they're just going to ice up, none of our equipment would even be able to, you know, do anything with them. So next week, they're talking about the temperatures warming up a little bit more, but now we've got to get ahold of our, our people that haul our leaves for us and see if even the dump sites are even going to be open at this point in time, because if they're not open, you know, it's going to put a, a big, big burden on what's going to happen.
Just keep us posted, please.
Absolutely.
If I, I mean, didn't we have this conversation last, last year and the year before, that we, by law, can't pick up after 11:30, because?
I know it's been stated in the past, I'd have to look and make sure that's-
Okay. I just, that's, I mean, I've gotten some phone calls from some folks, and I get it, because they raked them out there and now.
Well, it's all the-
It's a really big mess in the spring.
Get, get them.
But it's a big mess now as well, because, you know, what are you going to do with it? But I don't, I thought that there was some legal reason we couldn't pick up, because we can't keep them.
One reason is Naperville said that they'll pick up to December 5th. And I think that was the problem last year, is the Swiggle picked up, we said no, Swiggle picked up for another week. This year, it's Naperville already posted that they will wait till December 5th. But I don't know, it's up to Rich to find the guy that we can dump to, that's the problem.
Yeah, but we'll talk it over this week and give you guys an update and obviously get something out to residents to let residents know.
If you put it in the notes for Friday or something, that's fine.
Yeah, and we'll put it out on website and Facebook.
Thank you.
Okay. I have related question. I was contacted today by a resident about brush pickup, and I did reach out to Rick, and his response was spot-on. Let's talk about this after this, after the plows come back in, about brush pickup, possibility of a brush pickup, because there's a lot of trees that came down. I know I had four coworkers that lost trees in their yard.
Yeah.
And so I, I told the guy that, you know, I would bring it up and talk about it, and that, you know, there might be something we can do down the road, but it's going to take a couple weeks before we do anything.
Yep. All right. Thanks. All right, if nothing else, future meetings, village board meeting on Monday, December 10th at 7:00 PM in this room, and we'll go into, actually, we'll adjourn to executive session to discuss the unemployment of an employee, and with that, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yeah.
Trustee Marasek?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
All right.